Thirty-one, PL nineteen seventy-five, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January second, twenty fifteen, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker, one turnaround?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The Chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order, and after appropriate warning, may terminate any further comments from that speaker.
Will they like to be heard?
All right, thank you, Warner Baumgartner. Thanks for the acknowledgement earlier, appreciate that. On the website, the city minutes, the agendas for the various meetings are difficult to find. When I do find them, this particular meeting, the last time I looked, is scheduled to start at seven, when in fact, it really does start at six-thirty. So, it may explain why there's like a lull in people coming in and wandering in late, because the website posting says, "Meeting starts at seven," when really, we start doing public business, albeit a work session, at six-thirty. So perhaps that could be changed to the proper time. Thanks.
Thank you. It will be changed immediately. But, Tony's a change.
Hi, Tim Harris, taxpayer. Couple of quick questions first. Did like, I know the town, the council gets a lot of grief from a lot of different issues, but did want to bring up one point. Couple of months ago, when I was here, raised a question about a tree that the city had between the curb and the sidewalk, next to one of my properties. Actually, the property just been repaired under the RCA program. Thank you very much, you did a wonderful job. Spoke with Ms. Quinn, and I have to say, two days afterwards, the brush was trimmed, the tree was trimmed. Shortly after that, shade tree commission came, inspected the tree, had it removed, and it's the quickest turnaround I've seen with anything. So I did want to say, thank you very much, kudos, Ms. Quinn. I really appreciate your hard work there.
Sure.
Couple of quick questions. I was wondering, one about the status of the park. Springwood Avenue Park, just if there's any set timeline, so when that would be done? And I can go through my second question, or I could respond to that one?
No, no, answer all your questions, so you don't run out of time.
Okay. And the next one would be, I guess there's a program, there's a program in place with respect to vacant properties, abandoned properties in the area. And I was curious as to how that differed from, I think back in oh-three or oh-four, there'd been a scattered lots program. And I was curious as to the difference between the two programs, because I know there were several lots on that program, and some of them actually are still there and in a bit of disrepair. So it's curious as to the difference between the two programs, and maybe someone could give a little enlightenment as to just how the current program will be moving forward. Thanks a lot.
Yes.
Okay. The first issue, right, about the park. All right, we just went out to bid for some additional engineering services that have to be completed there. All right, primarily for design. Once that's completed, all right, we're hoping that we're going to have shovels into the ground. All right, as far as the estimate, the date, all right, that would be determined upon what our engineers come back, all right, and tell us. We definitely want to make sure that, you know, we got something going for the spring. Right? And you've heard last year, we definitely want to have something going for the spring. This year, we're really going to try to push forward. All right? The, my recollection of the old scattered site housing program was, that was lots that the city owned. All right? As opposed to, no, Jerry? Go ahead, tell me then. I wasn't involved with it then.
Whoa, 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 no, no, Tony, answer the question.
My understanding was, is that it was scattered sites that were properties that were owned by the city. All right? I wasn't involved with it back then. All right, I'd be more than happy to look it up, but I'm sure you're going to tell me the real deal.
No, well, Mr. Harris.
But I will get you information, Mr. Harris.
We'll get back to you with the specifics.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
And leave your, why don't you leave your email with Tony, so we can get back to you about scattered sites.
Okay, we'll do it.
Good evening. Howard Rochke, it's owner of Moonstruck Restaurant, Asbury Park. First, I'd like to thank you for your folks devoting your time and energy, bringing the city and continuing its greatness at the road that we're on. But I just want to say that I've been, I've been in the hospitality business for thirty-five years, and for me, it's always been about making sure people leave my restaurant with a good taste in their mouth. Making visitors feel that they've made the right choice when they decide to come out for the evening. We've built our success on encouraging repeat customers. If a guest waits too long for a drink, we hire a bartender, another bartender. If they wait too long for their meal, we hire more cooks. If there's the smallest complaint, we try to fix it. That is what people in the hospitality business do. It's what we do. And we're successful at what we do. We try to meet and exceed the expectations of the people that come out and visit us. We are now at a junction where our visitors are extremely frustrated prior to walking in, and it's only February in regards to parking. We now, at a seven-hundred-capacity beer hall, was approved without any qualifications in regards to tourism and the hospitality. This approval was done for the sake of more revenue for the city. Great. The parking study that has been done, I believe, will be flawed. It does not include the beer hall, additional restaurants, and movie houses that are yet or have just recently opened. Please consider an emergency solution. What we see is, which would include the undeveloped land along Cookman and Lake Avenue. Establish a temporary additional parking area until we can get to something more permanent. I believe I-STAR, which owns the property along Lake Avenue and Cookman Avenue, would be in some type of an agreement as far as something, if we could temporarily pave this lot until they build this property. But at this point, you know, they put it as a cap, give them a tax deferment or tax abatement, something to let us put up a gate and a pay station and let people park in this, and I'm talking about tomorrow. This is a very, very dire situation because of this beer hall, restaurants that have all opened up in a downtown district that used to be a shopping district, now it is a venue for nightlife, and at night, people are not going to be walking the streets four and five blocks, especially older people. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will reach out to I-STAR. We reached out to them before as far as amendments to the plan, and some of them are for temporary parking lots, and we will continue to reach out. Only one thing, I agree with ninety-nine point nine percent of what you said, and you came to the planning board and said, "This is going to happen," and everybody knew it was going to happen. Only thing I disagree with you is like, the city did not benefit by making money off of that beer garden. I mean, I, I had, we didn't benefit. I mean, we were stuck with the CBD plan, which right now, I think should be reopened and it's like a moratorium put on. Nothing else is built till we can figure out more parking, and I can't get that passed. I agree with you, and if the Savoy comes online, if other things come online, it's just going to make it worse, and we don't have the solution. So, I agree with you, but the city did not benefit except maybe we're going to get more tax dollars, but I mean, we did not get anything financially.
I lose my mind.
No, 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 but I remember, I was on the planning board, you came and you commented, and you're right, and it's seven-hundred seats, and right now, they're not using the upstairs, so it's only two-fifty, and how bad it is. So come summertime, come nice weather, it's going to be a lot worse, and I would love to pass a moratorium, nothing else until we figure out parking. Thank you.
The only, and I agree with everything John says, part of it is getting I-STAR to agree. So I-STAR, I'm not saying they won't, I'm just saying, the lots that you're talking about, it's about getting I-STAR on board with, you know, doing the bare minimum, but the bare minimum of just paving and lighting, and, I mean, it's, well, it's conversations we can, we can continue to have.
And what we're with them, like, if we can get away with a temporary lot, for a legal parking lot, you got to pave it, you got to put in bumpers, you got to line it, I mean, if we can get away with something else where we both agree, and we both get a whole harmless clause, I mean, I would go like, hey, just make it gravel, make it parkable. So, I mean, we will, again, reach out to them and try to get this, and you're right, this is true of the number. So thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Teresa Jones, former business owner in town here. Comment regarding the Westside Community Center. Myself and a couple of other people have been trying to get on that board for several months. Submitted some information to Reverend Oats. In a couple of days, I'm going to have plenty of free time, I have broad experience. Somebody needs to bust up the madness. And I'm going to piggyback on the parking situation. I grew up here. I lived in Neptune, but we grew up here with the boardwalk and family businesses in Asbury Park during the sixties and the seventies. And I'm going to call, not in a derogatory way, but I'm going to call you, many of you in this room, the Johnny Come-Latelys, there never was any parking here. People parked to get to the beachfront on Railroad Avenue, which is now Memorial Drive, and you walked. You have more parking now that was accessible when Asbury Park was up and running with full boardwalk activities, because with the Asbury Partners coming in, when renovations and everything, and eminent domain was very active in the nineties and eighties, the density of housing was greatly reduced. So, you can come up with plans. What has happened, when they changed the zoning and planning, there wasn't any real city planscaping. It was a free-for-all, and issues were disregarded as far as the planning. So what you're going to, what you're having, you're going back to what it was in the seventies and the sixties and fifties, and everybody's going to have to walk three, four, or five blocks. Just want to make a comment on that, because people are really not getting it.
Thank you, Teresa.
Hi, Danny Weiss, twelve oh-five Fourth Avenue, and I'm just going to briefly comment regarding, our resolution two thousand fifteen, one hundred. I would like to thank each and every council member. I personally approached all five of you, asking for your support in trying to get, and the name is a little bit long, the Sunset Avenue Bridge Traffic Safety Liaison Committee for Asbury Park started. I'd like to thank you for your support. If past my sense is that many governmental agencies can come together to help make the madness for the next eighteen months not only more bearable, but more importantly, much safer. So I just want to thank all five of you. Thank you very much.
You got to click, give me, okay. Hello, mayor and council. John, you may have to give me six minutes, but I have to talk for Rita, too. Just a joke. Okay, because Rita's not feeling well, that's why she couldn't make it tonight. But, I got to carry on what she was talking about. Rita filled out a note for a request for the time clock, so I mean, who's going to get the compensation for the, who gets sick leave and all that other stuff, the compensation that the people get? But, what I wanted to bring up was, do we have the time clocks yet?
We do.
Oh, we do, okay, now.
It's going into effect, our, the beginning of the next pay period, on March third.
Okay, now, who's going to be using the time clocks?
Everyone in the building.
Everybody, even the department heads?
Even department heads.
Okay, because I always thought, we need to manage the comp time, because a lot of times, I feel, people, they show up late, they work late, they get paid the ten hours, no one gets docked, or the day doesn't start when they come in at eleven, because a lot of times, when you call up in the morning, there's nobody, and a department head may not be in the office. But that's good, that everyone's going to use it. Okay, I just want to limit the comp time. Okay, now, the other thing is, on the, on the webs, on Facebook, the Asbury Park Sun said that we were going to get food trucks. And I'm not against food trucks, I think they're a great idea in Sandy Hook, because they don't have any storefront, and they don't have businesses there that serve food. What I'm concerned about awarding or allowing them to do the food trucks is, we're missing the panels on Convention Hall. The reason I think the food trucks are as bad as the parking lots that we have, the field of parking lots, we lost tradeables. Somebody should be held accountable to start building new buildings, or making something that we have real people, real companies that are running stores, where they pay for the lights to make the streets safer and stuff. The food trucks come and go, and the money goes with them. Sure, they may hire a few local people, but you got to make some demands if you're going to give them something. And the big thing with the food trucks is, it's disposable, they go. And you know where that trash goes? It doesn't go in their recyclable containers, it goes on the streets. There has to be a better system than those food trucks, and I think you have to do a trade-off. Say, "You want them?" This is what you got to show us. Show us that you're building something. Give us a future, not just empty lots in the wintertime and food trucks in the summer. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Jerry, and I think we're in agreement with you. There's a lot of details that have to be worked out, they have not come before council yet about these details, so it's just, I read the same article, and that's all I know about it.
Okay, well, I had some minor disagreements on Facebook about it, and it's like, we want the best for this town, not a temporary fix. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, public session. All in favor?
All right.
Is there? Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion open? Do I have to open the tab?
This is a.
Sorry, quick question. I am.
Just your name.
Oh, Ketsia.
And?
And where I live?
Yes.
I live on Langford Street.
Okay.
Okay, I'm completing my capstone for school, and of course, I chose to do it on this great city of Asbury Park, but I needed our budget, like a record of our budget, and when I looked online, we only had records for the last three years, and so I wasn't sure if there was anywhere else I could go that we had a record, because I'm looking for trends, and three years isn't really enough time, so I don't know if we have a record of our budgets past two thousand and twelve.
Is that your only question?
Yep.
Ricky Gart?
Yes.
Can you, can you answer that question?
Give Tony your email, and we'll come to you.
Okay. On the last ten would be great. Okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, we are on to item G, approval of minutes. We have the approval of the February twelfth work session meeting minutes.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council, and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are to be considered routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. We have two thousand fifteen eighty-nine, an approval of the special events applications and weddings as outlined on February twenty-third.
Move it.
Second.
I have one more. We have a raffle license submitted by the Mercy Corp. for an event October twenty-second, two thousand fifteen.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay. The next resolution we have listed is two thousand fifteen fifty-nine. Late this afternoon, I received word from the attorney, they're not ready. We will remove that item. We have two thousand fifteen sixty-seven, a resolution appointing individuals to various boards, commissions, and/or committees, if necessary.
I don't think it's that.
Okay.
We have to create them first.
Okay, we are on to resolution two thousand fifteen ninety-one, a resolution authorizing the payment of bills in the amount of six hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents.
With the note, with the note about not paying, doesn't it?
The check.
Oh, we're going to approve it, we're not going to mail it, you're right, great.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion is.
Set, move, second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, on all set number five dash oh-one dash two-three dash two-two oh dash zero-zero-zero dash two oh nine, which I have to stay on.
Okay.
I'll give you that tomorrow.
All right. We have a resolution authorizing the payment of the payroll in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighteen cents.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We have a resolution authorizing the purchase of two ambulance.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of six police interceptor utility vehicles.
Move it.
Second.
Question, isn't this a mistake? The other night, it was like, six patrol cars and one interceptor vehicle.
The, we broke them out, the six police cars, these are six police cars for, obviously, for the police department. The one SUV interceptor, all right, is for the fire department. So there's a separate, there's a separate resolution.
But the Monday nights.
Yeah, it said interceptor for police.
It said interceptor for police.
And I know that, because I had to Google it.
And it said, "Six police cars," it says, "Six police," what's the, what's the difference between a police car and a police interceptor?
Okay.
Okay, why don't we just call it a police car?
Because that's, that's the model of the utility vehicle.
Okay, so the other note is wrong, that one, okay, haven't.
Yeah, that was the fire department.
These, and, these are police cars for patrol.
Patrol.
These police cars have GPS.
They're fully, they're fully equipped from a different funding, they're not funded for the equipment package, that's through the legal protect, LET. Everything that you're voting on is for the vehicle itself, but we've already have approval from LET. So yes, it's a full package with MDT, cameras, all of it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of two Ford Focus vehicles for code enforcement.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
No.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes. But this is, yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a two thousand fifteen Ford Explorer for the fire department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a two thousand fifteen Ford Explorer for social services.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a two thousand fifteen police interceptor utility vehicle.
Move it.
Okay, second question, you've got.
The police interceptor, right? I know, we're all, that's what we're trying to figure out.
So what's, what's, what's a police interceptor utility vehicle?
This is not CVA.
This, this is not my item. It wasn't. This is the fire department's item. I only have six.
This is what?
This is the fire department, this is the fire department's item. It's, it's the make of the car, all right, it's the same type of car that the.
How many cars is fire asking for? I thought you were just asking for you, for Explorer.
We're asking for two Explorers to replace our two two thousand and six.
But this is a police interceptor utility vehicle.
There was, it's, the way it was played to me, it's basically a Ford Explorer. There's less, I'll say, police package stuff on the other one that we would need.
But Monday night, we just, you, how come Monday night, you just were asking for one? Or were you asking for two, and I missed that Monday night?
I was always asking for, we didn't have any discussions with that, but we were always asking for two.
I think we thought of, because it was five police interceptor cars and one police interceptor SUV, we assumed it was police for five and one.
Okay.
But it was. I would so assume it's police, it says police.
But that's the, that's the, the make of the car and the equipment that would be in it.
What's the cost of this?
Twenty-four, seven-thirty.
But it's not called a police interceptor utility vehicle. That, that's what you called the vehicle that you're buying?
Yes, it's a Ford.
Okay.
It's a police package. And that's what it's called.
Okay.
All right. And it's got all the emergency equipment, all right, already included in it.
Okay.
Did we have a motion, second?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
It's cheaper.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
A resolution of the City of Asbury Park to permit the Asbury Park Fire Department to apply for the two thousand fourteen Safer Grant.
Move it.
Second.
Questions? What, what's the number?
Oh.
That's a decision by mayor and council.
I mean, I know you're, you're asking for five, Kevin, right?
We can make the number anything we want.
We want you to make it three. That's what we want you to do. Right? Am I, am I, I'm not speaking the answer. He's asking for five, but we're saying three.
Correct. Let that be part of the minutes. Part of the resolution, one of you wanted. Part of the resolution, one of you wanted.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
As it's going to be modified. Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
A resolution establishing a Sunset Avenue Bridge Traffic Safety Liaison Committee in and for the City of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Question. And Danny, I thank you for stepping forward and doing this. Are you going to limit the size of this committee?
Yes.
To who? How much? How many? No, just like...
I don't want to keep it so small that...
The four.
I'd say less than 10.
Okay, fine, no problem. Okay, thank you.
I keep it very small so that a lot of work gets done. We don't want a lot of everything, we want dealers.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Council, Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
A resolution establishing a Parking Advisory Committee in and for the City of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Can I just make one comment to the public now, I mean, we've had, quite frankly, a public committee that has met every month, the first Tuesday of the month at 5:30 for, I, I don't, I haven't been on it that long, but I've been on it about 15 months. We're just making it an official committee, and then we'll start, you know, many of the people who've been going will probably be put on the committee, but we'll start doing committee members there. We're just making it a, a, a more official committee. It's a committee that has existed, from my understanding, years, but I've only been on it for about a year and a half.
Okay, we have a resolution establishing a Code Enforcement/Quality of Life Advisory Committee in and for the City of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional engineering services with T and M Associates.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the city's representatives to negotiate an agreement with the Asbury Park Board of Education to share a portion of the board's fiber optic cables for the city's security cameras.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, we are on to ordinances.
Hold on one, hold on one second. Didn't we forget something? Like, an answer to DEP? As far as the Fisherman's Lot, we're just going to just not?
It was pulled from the agenda.
But you addressed that publicly on, on Monday evening during the, the work session Monday, where you all said that you were not interested in moving forward with that.
I think we should formalize that by vote. I mean, for, you tell me, I mean, is that sufficient?
I don't think you need to submit it to a formal vote. If you wanted to proceed, then we had a right-of-entry agreement that they were suggesting that you enter into, but you made it clear on Monday publicly that you're not interested in proceeding with that, and the city manager has communicated that message to the DEP.
Okay, fine, okay.
I let you know today that, you know, I didn't see the votes, alright, the votes weren't there for it. I did have an exchange of information between myself and DEP.
Okay.
Based on, you know, the council said is that they didn't want to vote, so they decided...
It was going to probably fail five to zero, but I mean, it's just something like when somebody asks for something, I think they should get a, I guess the response was...
But it was addressed publicly. And, and Tony, you can go further, not just saying that you don't see the votes, it was addressed publicly at the work session on Monday, and council said they were not interested in granting the, the DEP their storage rights on the Fisherman's Lot.
Could somebody just please send that to everybody tomorrow morning?
You can put that in a letter to the DEP representatives who made their public presentation to us two weeks ago and put an end to it.
Because she sent a nice email, I read very quickly this morning, saying, no matter what happens, she wanted to thank us for being so cooperative and trying to work this out. So I don't think they understood, like, it was a no until tomorrow. So, if you can do that tomorrow, I appreciate it.
There was another email after that one.
Oh, I haven't been home in three days, so, okay. Thank you, sorry, sorry.
That's okay. We are on to ordinances, First Readings, Introductions. The first ordinance we have is 2015-6, An Ordinance of the City of Asbury Park Adopting an Amendment to the Central Business District Redevelopment Plan Relating to the Central Business District Redevelopment Area.
Move it.
Second.
And this relates to the Lake House West. Mr. Liedersdorf was present during the work session on Monday evening and explained, or actually, correction. This was something that you referred to the planning board previously, and the planning board has recommended back to you to move forward with the plan amendment. I know Mr. Liedersdorf was here also on Monday regarding a different issue, related to that same property. This is the plan amendment that would allow the use of the adjacent building for similar types of services that the lake house is currently providing.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
And with our publication requirements, the public hearing on this would be March 25th. The next ordinance we have is 2015-07, Establishing a Restricted Parking Space for Use by Handicapped Persons at Property Located at 1113 Fifth Avenue Designated as Block 2304, Lot 24, in the City of Asbury Park, and Amending and Supplementing Section 7-36 Entitled Handicap Parking of Chapter 7, Traffic of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
And the public hearing on this ordinance would also be March 25th.
There is a question about that. And Tony, I don't know, okay. This is somebody that's handicapped, asked for a handicap spot, and we're not going to address it for two weeks because we don't want to advertise in the press, because it costs too much, but we're advertising the coaster. But are we putting somebody handicapped, like, in limbo for two, for an extra two weeks for a lousy $50? I mean, something like this, should we just bite the bullet and advertise it quicker, so it's like passed quicker? I mean, is, is this somebody that is severely handicapped and needs this right away?
I, I don't know the status of the, if I have applied, I know, I know that Joel may or may not have met the person. It's not one of the things we look into, they have to have a bona fide handicap status, and then we have to check out to see if there's any other alternatives to providing them that, that space. In other words, do they have off-street parking? Is there something closed? Is it a hazard? Once we've gone through all those things, we routinely just make recommendation to, you know, to present it.
Yeah, right. Now, this is a question, I was just thinking of, it just popped in my head tonight. Right, I don't know, what, what's the difference to advertising the coaster, advertising the press for something? To move, to move it up two weeks quicker?
Fifty, seventy-five dollars?
Probably.
To move it up for a taxpayer that needs a handicap spot?
Then you could have the public hearing on March 11th of the advertising the Asbury Park press.
I, I would, I would recommend we do that.
Okay, so then, on Ordinance 2015-07, the public hearing will be March 11th.
Moore has the passion. What's wrong?
We are on to Ordinance 2015-08, An Ordinance Establishing a New Job Title in the City of Asbury Park and the Salary Associated therewith Communications Director.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On the 25th or the 11th?
The 25th.
Oh, the 11th.
The 11th.
Remember, if you go to the 11th, alright, you're going to have to advertise in the press.
Okay, the 11th.
The public hearing on 2015-08 will be on March 11th. We are on to public hearings, can I have a motion to open a public hearing on Ordinance 2015-02, An Ordinance Amending Certain Defunct Job Titles and Establishing New Salary for New Job Titles in accordance with NJ Civil Service Commission?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Tony, you're afraid you might just give a brief description of what this is about, and see if anybody wants to speak about it?
Absolutely. Alright, civil service title was currently a street sweeper, alright, for this position. Alright, civil service has changed the title of the position to, alright, motor broom operator, alright, slash truck driver. Alright, so, alright, in keeping with, alright, the job titles and the job descriptions for the Department of Personnel, alright, we need to change, alright, we need to change our ordinance, alright, to be in compliance with their titles. That's what this is about. The person is on staff, alright, it's not a new position, alright, it's just a change in title.
Anybody like to be heard? Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Most to the top.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Our public hearing, a motion to enter a public hearing for Ordinance 2015-04, Amending and Supplementing Chapter 12 Entitled Building and Housing of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Are there any comments?
And this ordinance revises the construction fee schedule. Mr. Seela, our construction official came forward before the mayor and council a few work sessions ago and set forth this recommendation, and this will totally supersede the existing provisions of this section of the code.
Thank you. Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. I had the opportunity to go over this proposed ordinance in some detail. Few things that jump out at me right off the bat is that this is nine full legal-sized pages that describes, basically, what fees are charged for various work to be done within the city. I think that's excessive, nine pages, for somebody to have to wade through nine pages of, of text in order to locate the amount of money they should pay for a particular project is, is a bit much. And part of this is a lot of redundant wording that's in here. The phrase "the fee for," or "the fee shall be," or "the contingent fee is," I counted them up, there's 66 instances of that phrase being repeated here for almost every single line item or paragraph. Accounts for a lot of the space that's used. The structure of this seems to be a bit difficult to understand logically also, because in certain places, it does make sense in terms of reading. There's a little section here where it talks about for-service equipment, and then it says what the basic specs are and what the numbers are. Throughout the rest of the document, every single little thing is almost on a line all by itself. So I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is, the trend these days is to make things more understandable for the public. Simpler government, make things readable and comprehensible by the average person. So I'm going to suggest that this be gone over with a fine-tooth comb and all the redundancies removed, that things be organized in schedule form, you know? Line, 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 the number, 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 with simple descriptions. And there's one thing that probably should be moved entirely. You have a section here entitled "Fire," and then followed by a section called "Fees for Certificates and Other Permits as Follows," followed by "Fire Limits Established," which is unchanged. So squeezed in between two things relating to fire, you've got miscellaneous other things, like certificates of occupancy. This should probably be put at the very front. Describes what the minimum fee is for certain work, what a certificate of occupancy costs, what an inspection costs. Those general-type things should probably be at the very beginning, followed by the specific, so that it doesn't really cut into the two sections relating to fire-type things. So, you know, I appreciate the work that went into this, and I appreciate all the revisions. Maybe if I had to pay them, I wouldn't appreciate it as much. But I think logically, from an understandability point of view, and simple, you know, human interaction with reading this, it probably needs to be combed through and improved quite a bit. So that's my suggestion, thank you.
Thank you.
Arman Kai Macjian, 317 Sixth Avenue. I just heard that you're people buying so many vehicles, SUVs.
This is just about this ordinance right now, Arman.
I see.
It's not the public portion part.
I see.
We have that already.
Alright.
You can bring it up next meeting.
Yes.
Or just tell us all at the end of this one.
Okay, I will, thank you very much, yes.
And when we close this? Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. Arman, just, and, just to let you know, all the vehicles that were bought, they were, I'm going to say, Ricky Craig failed to report for wreckage. They were bonded for last year for a million and a half dollars, and the money's there. It's not like we're adding more to it. The money's already set aside for these vehicles.
My, my question was, do you mind showing the vehicles, I think you have to check the prices for people that are leaving, so you get margin?
Yes, yes, yes. They're all state contracts, and they were all needed, and they were all vetted. And there are two ambulances, there are replacement 10-year-old ambulance insurance, so you're good. For sure, the police car drastically, this is, patrol cars out on the street. And next meeting, because you come in all the time, we're finally going to get your dumpster out of there, and the COVID protection, so, uh... So I extended the meeting a little bit for you out of the table, so, is that, motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Do you have it? We passed it.
With, if I could just jump in on Warner's comments, I think it was important for the council to have adopted the ordinance tonight so as to get the fees in place. But I think that Warner brings up some good points, and it's very timely, because as you know, we're going through the recodification process that has to be accomplished within the first 90 days of your tenure, given the change in the form of government. That's something that the committee that's working on the recodification, including Deputy Mayor Quinn, myself, Ms. Lambertin, can work on to try to make it more reader-friendly.
A simplified fee schedule?
Correct.
For the construction costs.
We can do that right out of the construction.
Which, which this, which this document made the old document better, and it's simpler. And can it be tweaked a little bit? Yes. But was it important that it be passed tonight? Yes. So, but are we open to tweaking it? Yes. And you can talk to George, but George, I appreciate all the work you put into this. We're closer to you. Okay, we'll do it again, motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.